We're back after a little brief break. And now we're going to go to the, our final presentation, no pressure. Tammy is going to talk to us about our communication strategy, which I'll be honest, is interspersed through all of the components that we've done because a big function of what we do is, we do the stuff, but then we need to communicate to our community what we're doing. So Tammy, please.
So, our communication strategy was, we will strategically communicate with all stakeholders to increase engagement and support. And we had three specific results. Create systemic communication guidelines. Redesign the website with an integrated mobile app so it functions as a communications hub that is available on multiple platforms and is user-friendly for all Solen School stakeholders. And specific result number three, create a job analysis on positions that deal with communications. So we're going to start with a specific result number one, which was communications guidelines. Our communications guidelines were developed through a collaborative process. And we took diverse perspectives to develop these from both within and outside of our school district. We gathered input from our communications action team and we took, we conducted a community survey. Many of you might have seen that QR code that we mailed out to the community. We emailed it. So we collected from all over our community. We conducted a staff survey and we engaged with our strategic plan staff focus group internally. This inclusive approach ensured that our guidelines addressed the needs and the preferences of all of our stakeholders. The community survey, we wanted to make sure that we were engaging at the effectiveness of our communication efforts that we were, already had ongoing and make sure that what we were going to do with our communications guidelines and our communications efforts going forward were on target with what our community wanted. So the results that we got showed that we were doing a pretty good job and they provide valuable insights that are continuing to guide what we're doing now. Our community expressed high levels of satisfaction with the quality of our communication. And so it was particularly encouraging to see that the respondents felt well-informed about school matters. This told us that we were on the right track, but it also highlighted areas that we could improve. So one interesting finding was that people felt that we were striking a pretty good balance with the communication frequency. And so for us, that was pretty crucial because we're always striving to make sure that we're not over-communicating with people. We don't want to overwhelm our community, especially our parent community, with too much communication. So when it came to the communication channels that we're using now, email emerged as the clear favorite among our families and our parents, with 90% of respondents saying that they relied on it as their primary source of information. So this reinforced what we believed, but it was good to have the data as a backup to show that that was, it was true. However, we also saw potential in other channels. Social media showed promise in reaching diverse audiences. And the survey also fully supported our decision in communication, in our specific result too, that we need to redesign our website.
How was the response to that, to the survey?
It was, it was very good.
Was it? You were pleased with it?
We were, we were.
I just didn't know if people would actually do it.
Yeah. No, it was good. And it, it was not only parents that we had a very good response from our community as well. It was people who did not have kids in the schools. And we also broke that down and I can give you more details.
No, I was just curious. But you know, as, as numbers, that's one of the things that we're always concerned about is reaching out to our, just not parents, but to our entire community.
For sure.
Because that's who we represent.
And we did ask people, not only did you not have student, you know, kids in the schools, but how long you lived in the community as well.
Oh, okay.
So are they newer to Solen or, you know, have they, you know, lived here a longer amount of time? Did they live in Solen? Did they live in Glen Willow? Are you responding to this as a business owner? Do you just work in Solen and not live here? Things like that as well.
Okay.
So overall, the survey confirmed that our communication efforts were largely successful and that our multi-channel approach, although primarily driven with email, was helping us with getting through to our, our community. So it's providing a strong foundation in what we're doing and it's keeping our stakeholders engaged and informed. So while we're pleased with these results, we also recognize the need for continuous improvement, particularly in regard to our digital communication strategies such as our web design and integrating a new mobile app. So this survey also served as a valuable reference point for us as we move forward to develop our comprehensive guidelines. So the four main guidelines and the goals as we, as we structure them were to streamline and maximize communication efficiency, establish clear norms and expectations, provide unified, uniform guidance across the district, and importantly, preserve the individuality and professional judgment of our staff. So these guidelines are now representing a balanced approach to district-wide communication and aiming to enhance clarity and consistency while respecting the unique needs of the different school levels and individual educators within our district. So let's look a little bit at what that looks like throughout the district. And as we go through these, I'm going to fly out to a lot of different examples through here. So sorry about that, but it's just easier to show you as we go through because so many things are in process right now. So let's talk a little bit about the changes that we've made to strengthen our communication throughout the different levels at the district. This process all along has enabled us to decentralize a lot of our communications in, in areas. At the district level, we communicate via Blackboard Connect through our mass notification system. We use texting sparingly and mostly for more emergency and important things. And an important reason for that is because of FCC communications rules that enable parents to opt out at any time. And we can't just opt them back in. So we need them to be able to get the emergency information when they get it. So we try and make sure that we use that for things just like drills, crisis communications, and things like that. We use our, you know, we communicate through our Know Your Schools newsletter, universal programming and things like that. We were much more centralized prior to this and this process has enabled us to have our schools take more ownership and responsibility as well as some of our district departments as well. So our transportation department and food service departments are also able to send out their own informations with regular route information.
Do they, do they run that past you when they do that?
Depends on...
I'm just curious. I didn't know if that was a...
They started at the beginning when we first started doing it, everything was being run through Tammy. And then as we, as they developed, these are the expectations for what you have to communicate, then she was able to take less of a role.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
We, we do communicate a lot together. It depends on the type of communication. Things that are more crisis communication related, we always talk a good bet together. And we have templates built and so we can work together that way. But you know, the principals and I definitely talk a lot. But the school-level communications, as we go to these, these they can really manage on their own now, which is a, which is a great thing that we've been able to accomplish. So they are able to send them all on their own. They have created a structure unto themselves where they create a weekly or bi-weekly or they, they've set up a schedule unto themselves. And then they create links within there so it's easy for them to see and for the parents to be able to see. And so this makes it much easier for parents when they get these in, through our Blackboard notification system. It comes right to their email. For our K through four families, these come once a week and the links are right there in the email for them. And they are able to see all of the flyers embedded in there for them. And it makes it just like a one-stop shopping for them, for them right away. And this, this was a very big change in terms of making sure that at each level, that we created these frequencies for them.
This is just since strategic planning, since...
Some of them had been doing it before, but it was not uniform throughout the district. So this process created that.
Which I think is important.
And one of the big one, we also created this at the high school level as well. So now Erin sends these out twice a month and they're broken down by freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors as well. So her, her in the know comes out for, you know, at each level as well.
Good.
It's just the parents know when to expect them and then although there's a lot of information in them, it becomes like a digest for them that they can go back and forth in them. And it just, is just a very helpful way to do that. And that, we thought, we felt like that was very, very important. And the, using email for this is also important because it's, it's a way for us, we have this commitment in Solen to be very transparent with parents and to make sure that we're in, making sure that we're providing all of the information. So although sometimes parents may say, I want less information in there, I only want exactly the nitty-gritty and things like that, it's very important for us to make sure that everything is in there. We've provided all the information and they can go back and find it at any time. Especially at the high school level when we're providing information related to graduation, caps and gowns, different things like that, PSATs throughout the year that people have to sign up for. It gives them, like I said, that digest overall so that they can go back to that, you know, at different times throughout the year. And then obviously, we, we work with PTA and to make sure that we provide PTA information and we work with, with them as well to provide that information and work with our booster and organizations as well. The teacher-level communication was something that we worked on as well. And we asked our teachers to share clear communication schedules with families. So we did additional standardization, which from the beginning, we worked with our staff group and Fred will remember, we met in this room several times. And this is the one where when we started, we thought, this is going to be the one that's going to be the most difficult to figure out how we're going to get to this and, and work on that. But actually, once we worked on our web design and we were working on figuring how were we going to create, recreate those teacher webpages, this is the one that became standardized the most easily in the end. And so I'm going to show you that in action when we get into the, the part about the web design. But the great part about this is for our pre-K through fourth grade classes, our teachers post weekly newsletters. In grades five through eight, we use a week at a glance in homework slides format. And for our high school students, the teachers post weekly Google lessons and calendars. And we really were able to standardize that. And it, it came to fruition in just a way that we weren't expecting, but it was something that we're, we're really proud of at this point. And we believe that good communication is really the key to like a strong school community. So all of these efforts that are aimed at keeping families well-informed, engaged in, in their school and the district really flow through that beginning point, which is their child's classrooms. And so whether that's one classroom, you know, at PK, at pre-K through four, or several classrooms starting in grade five, that, that good communication from the teacher classroom is really important.
Have parents been pleased with that too? I mean, are they...
They really are.
I bet. I mean, I don't, yeah, I'm just wondering if they kind of reach out.
Well, it's because it's a very big change. Previously, it was coming to them in different ways. Or if they had kids in different schools, it looked so different.
So different, yeah.
Exactly. And some of our parents had kids in different schools. For example, if you had a half-day K student at one school and, you know, your other students were at a different school, it looked very different. And now it doesn't look very different anymore. And with your principal, if it looked very different. So those things really standardized and made a big difference for our parents' communities. So another key area that related to our communication guidelines was, through our action plan, directed us to address establishing clear guidelines for incoming questions and concerns as well. So we approached this in two ways. First was an easy-to-use optimizing your outreach. So we have two, two kind of guidelines that we created here. We've embedded them. You're getting a little, getting a little head to the website here. So the first thing we started with was trying to help our families understand that the best way to communicate within our school district is to start closest to the students. So let me walk you through it just really quickly here. Is that for most student-related issues is that we recommend starting with your child's teacher. And so that's typically best position, the teacher's best position to address classroom concerns. For student athletes, the best point of contact is with the coaches. For the schools, it's to go, our school-related issues is to, you know, talk to the, the school themselves. Make a call to the school office. Our staff is there to help. The best place isn't to, you know, pop a comment onto social media where someone might not have the right answer. Because those things, we see that all the time where someone's provide, thinks that, thinks that they're helping, but it's not quite the right answer. So we really want them, we're always there to help. You know, the office staff is there and things like that. So we really want them to go to the school.
I think that's important. It was a big thing for us. I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
I want to make sure it's clear. One of the things that has, has happened, and it's actually in recent years, it's accelerated where people shift, as opposed to talking directly to the person who is most able to deal with their issue, they have a tendency to want to go above that person.
Really?
I'm trying to say it as politically, you know, it's the, I need to talk to your manager syndrome.
Yeah. Exactly.
And so having these guidelines to help us say, start with your teacher if you have a problem in your classroom. Start with your coach if you have a problem on the field. People want to, and it still happens, people will, they're, they're having a problem with their kid's homework and they'll call me. And that's not necessarily the right sequence to be able to get you the answers that you need. And so by establishing these guidelines, it helps to reinforce, who do you talk to when you're having a particular issue?
But I think though too, there's some of that, but I think your name is probably the most notorious in the district, right? I mean, I, I'm being fair. So that people don't know that if you have a bus issue or how do I change my pickup at Orchard? So who are all these other people? Who do I even email? There might be a level of, I mean, and it happens in my industry too, that like, it's just the name that pops up first in somebody's inbox and they, they're the one who gets the message and how much time.
I think that's what we're trying to point out.
Picking an email to the right place, right?
Absolutely.
Exactly. So this one is just a little bit more gen, whoops, sorry about that. So this one is a little bit more general in helping to make sure that you go to the right person first. The second one is kind of, how do you get to that right person just like what you were talking about? And so this one is more tagged toward getting to that person and within our staff directory and within the departments here in, here in the district. So starting with the classroom teacher, the advisor and coach, the guidance counselors, the social workers, the school psychologist. And there are links built in here and we also have created some different aspects, new connections on our website as well.
There's full-size ones of these in your book here.
Yeah.
Blue sections. My eyes can't read the slide.
Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Hard to see that. And so each step of the way, we keep, at least for the first half of these, we are building along the way. So we're trying to structure these communication pathways so that again, you're starting at the place that's closest to your student, that's closest to the specific need that they may have before we go on to the district level superintendent, et cetera. But then there are also other, other types of things that you might need as well, which might be related to...
How is this disseminated then? Is this...
We, well, we just started developing these.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't know if they were going out in emails or...
Well, these are, they're, they're finished now. So they're posted on our website. We are going, they're going to be in an upcoming issue of Know Your Schools. And so we're also going to, we're talking, talking administratively about how the best way would be within our schools to develop, to distribute.
Yeah, I mean, obviously that's key to things.
Exactly.
That's what I mean.
That's the next part of it.
Is letting them figure, find out how to get all this.
Exactly, exactly. So as part of how they're going to be disseminated, because different elements of them match with that. So for example, number five is the parent mentor and our director of pupil services. There are new elements on our website. I'm going to work ahead with that.
Can I make a comment?
Uh huh.
Where are you on this?
I'm far, a little bit farther.
Okay, okay. Because, because I think though too, like a lot of people too, they know your name, I think because your name comes with the emails, right?
They're going to call Tammy anyway.
Right, right. So like, where's, where's Tammy on this hierarchy?
So I'm a little bit farther down. I, I kind of de-emphasize myself on this one because people, people call me anyway, but...
Oh, I see. You're level seven.
I'm level seven.
Okay.
As we go down the, as we move past the superintendent, there are different elements on here where we have different, we can't exactly go, it's not like a wa, it's not like a specific flow chart because there are things on here where we also have to get to these other levels. So things...
Can I make a comment now too?
Yeah, of course.
Would it be helpful on this to have examples or like, a, a part of this nice color-coded thing? Like, you know, when it says...
Such as?
Like, um, like, like a frequently, like an example, you know, like you have a question about, did your kid take a different bus to another kid's house? Like, that goes, you know, on this level. Or if you can't get into your power school...
Call these people.
Yeah.
Who do you call?
Yeah, like for example, you're locked out of power school again. Do you bug Tammy again?
You're talking about like the communication pathways in action.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Example of the question. So I think, I think that's a great idea. I think that that would probably be like a companion piece to that.
Yeah.
And it's kind of like a click-through from that.
Yeah.
I can see that happen.
Yeah.
Yep. Let me, let me think about the best way to put that into action so that that works because it's almost like a freak, like, you know, how do you contact for that?
Yeah, so if people are used to one way...
Yeah, for sure.
Don't just keep doing it that way.
Right.
Save yourself some time.
Yep. That sounds great. Yep.
Yeah.
And then we end with the Board of Education, which is a little bit lengthy, but it talks about how the Board of Education and what the role of the Board of Education is because I think a lot of people oftentimes misunderstand what the role of the Board of Education is. And so thought it was important to just kind of talk about what that is and that sending people back to the beginning almost, that you, you as a Board of Education are always here for people. You're elected by them, you are a soundboard for them, but you're not the place to start because you don't have those specific answers. Kind of go back to the beginning and, and talk about that. So all of these things were important ways that we, we wanted to, at least through our strategic planning action team, wanted to give some specifics to people to kind of build from. So these aren't set in stone forever. We can add to them. Stephanie, that's a great idea to give like more...
I have, because I have another idea too.
Specific, yeah.
Should there be a level for the PTA? Because I don't know if some people in their minds know where the, what activity is like a PTA activity and what is a school activity? Are there people who are trying to communicate with the school about PTA issues? Should that be delineated?
I, I think that that falls under like that first one. Whenever you have a question about something related to the school, it's called the school because the school can always answer those questions. I think that people get confused, what is PTA and what is school?
Yeah.
And people default to PTA because PTA has a Facebook page. And that's, that's just the reality of what it is because a lot of times people default to social media. So they ask those questions of PTA very frequently. So I think it's just kind of flopping our mindset that way and going to the school first because the school does have the answers to PTA questions and to PTA programming and things like that. Because oftentimes they work so closely together.
Have the contact information.
For sure.
In case that someone would need it, I would think.
Can I ask another question? I love this one.
You can ask as many questions as you want.
Okay. Um, are there instances where folks are, say, interacting with social media accounts that are not the school's social media account about school-related issues and it delays, complicates the process?
Every single day.
That was an alley-oop. So like, how can that be addressed here? Because some, I, I do get concerned that some of those things, like a delay could mean a safety issue or something being addressed appropriately. I'm guessing that was part of the goal of this too. But how is the best way to tell folks what level of social media engagement is appropriate? With our accounts or with the school accounts or with any other accounts?
I think social media is always tricky.
Oh, really?
And, and part of that is because it is the best of times and it's the worst of times at the exact same time. Because it can share so many wonderful things, but at the same time, it can just send people down a rabbit hole of just trying to share negative things or try and find out different things instead of going to the source. So in our district, we try and use social media as a way of just, you know, sharing good news, sharing things about people, you know, in terms of like good news about the district. But we also have a very conservative social media presence because of our district policy about, you know, sharing student images online. Our policy is one of the most conservative around just because of, you know, student images online. So in, in those ways, sometimes our social media is not as engaging as maybe some other districts who throw up student images, you know, much more readily. So I mean, some, it's a double-edged sword in, in that way also.
Tammy's being very politic right now in what she's saying and I'll be a little less politic. If you have a question that you need to have answered, social media is the absolute last place that you should go to get that question answered. There's times where people will go on social media avenues and they will say, hey, can somebody tell me where I'm supposed to get the bus schedules?
Yeah.
That's something that can easily be handled to an email. You go to our school's website, you click on the transportation department there and you can find that information directly on our website. Or just pick up the general phone call and 248-1600. Call that number and we'll get it to you much faster than you post, where do I get the bus schedules? And somebody will eventually tell you who to call or what to do. But in the meantime, there'll be 37 other messages talking about the time when they had this issue and this is the person they talked to or this issue. So from our perspective, the best thing you can do is, is to go directly to the source. Call 248-1600 and we'll get you to where you need to be.
Yeah. But I'm also imagining too, like sometimes if somebody says, hey, I'm concerned about this or has anybody else noticed this? I get concerned that that could be a safety issue and Fred, you've only probably said it every single meeting, that there's avenues for that information, even if you're just one person noticing one thing.
Correct.
There's always, we have, we, if you have a concern, the best thing you can do is to, and I know it sounds, I know I'm sounding old, but pick up the phone. Call that number, 248-1600 and we will get you to the answer quicker than any other way.
So on that infographic, to add another potential level, should there be something on here that says that?
Sure.
Isn't that what number one is?
Yeah.
Number one?
No, I get where you're coming from Stephanie. Like a, your first thing is to pick up the phone and call.
Yeah, I mean, the very first phone.
Sure. Well, you want them to call the note, um, the hotline.
You're talking about safety concern.
Yeah.
Okay.
Where does that fit on here?
No, that's actually a good call.
I guess I, I brought it all back was like, you know, like, I don't want that to get lost in the shuffle too.
For sure.
Because it's a good message to, you know, call this kind of, this level, but it doesn't quite fit in levels. But then also, don't just go to social media about a safety issue, but then please also remember this other vendor that we used.
Right. Well, it's twofold because if, we want you to go to, to a trusted adult also because it doesn't always have to be an anonymous call. It can be you call your principal or someone.
Who are we addressing in this?
Right. This is, this is the, the primary thing for this is for families.
Family.
So it could be a student, but it's primarily...
It could be kids. Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I get where you're coming from though. And we've made a note of it.
That's great.
It is a work in progress, so.
Yeah. It's a lot. It's just, yeah, it's a lot.
It is a lot, but that's, but that's great. Nope, we can definitely add that in there.
Okay.
So thank you for that. So that takes us down to... One of the things, we've talked a little bit about it tonight because we, because it's so connected in through many of the different things. Tim talked a little bit about our Know Your Schools. And we're very excited about one of the newest elements of how we're using Know Your Schools, which is our digital Know Your Schools. And we view this publication as more than just a newsletter because it's more like a vibrant showcase of the Solon Schools community in action. It's good news about our community that they can use and it's delivered in a format that really fits with, you know, what people want to see. It's more fast-paced and it's more visually oriented. Um, and it's a direct result of our strategic plan goals for communications. So we've reimagined about how we're gonna, you know, talk about our, um, our good news. And so it's more than just a traditional format. And we're able to deliver it monthly and it really captures the essence of our schools.
We don't send it out though monthly, right? Just, that's just...
It's sent out digitally monthly.
Digitally monthly, yup. On the, on the last Friday of the month, we send it via email.
Oh, okay.
Know Your Schools just, Stephanie, just to, and for all the new people that will be watching this, Know Your Schools used to be a print publication.
I saw that.
And that print publication would come out once a year.
Quarterly, it was.
Quarterly is what it was designed to do, but because of the printing and the pictures and the timeliness, sometimes it would come out less than that. And by shifting to this online medium, which really is the way most of our modern parents are interacting with things, it enabled us to get that information out in a much, much more rapidly and in a greater volume than we did before. Full color, full color prints that you mail to people are incredibly expensive. But these are ways that we can do it more cost-effectively and I think reach a, a strong audience, a larger audience. We do print some copies to go to places like in our senior center. So there's actually a kiosk of these that are printed each month and you can, seniors can go and grab one.
This is what it looks like, there's your finance fax. And Finance Fax is actually on the second page every month, so people might not notice that. But we put it there because we want them to have to scroll through. We don't want them to have to scroll through very far to see it every month. And then also in every issue up toward the front is that Safe School Helpline graphic. We put that in there every month so that people remember to see it. But we've really embraced visual storytelling in here. There are lots of photos in here. So there are different types of, um, digital newsletter, prepackaged, um, products that you can use. But those prepackaged products, you don't get to put very many photos in. I mean, you put in one or two.
To your point earlier, like of all these pictures of all these kids are, have they been...
Everyone's been cleared.
Everyone's, I mean, you have to do that or do they do it at the beginning of the year now, or?
Well, they do submit with their annual, um, information updates.
They're okay with that?
They're okay with it, but we have to check each time. So it is, it is a process, it is cumbersome, but we do it. That's part of, that's part of our...
We have kids in our school district that cannot be publicly on the internet because there are safety concerns, there are people...
No, I, I get, I just want, there seems, there's something, like forty kids in the same picture, I was just trying to...
Yup. We, well, there are times when kids in a specific classroom might not be able to be in a photograph. So when we're working in a classroom and taking those pictures, we work with the teacher. And so those, those students, then we, um, we take the picture and the student might be standing on the edge. The student never knows that they're not in that photograph. We make them feel like they're a part of that picture and all of that. We do that very, very carefully with them. So, um, it's just, it's just part of, you know, how we, how we work with our kids. Um, so just like Fred talked about, you know, um, doing this every month and doing it in this format has really enabled us to improve our timelines. Um, and in curating the content every month, we really focus on stories that embody our core values. Um, and you'll see examples of our students be, being empathetic and you'll see them acquiring crucial knowledge and skills. And we also spotlight our students being collaborative, um, throughout every single issue. So we really focus on making sure that we're doing all of those touch points in every issue. Um, so here's one about the kindness crew. Here's one when, um, our preschoolers are working on, um, a project together collaboratively. Here is one where the, the kids were on a, a field trip, but as they're working on them, we talk about what their science goals were in there. So we're talking about the curriculum, we're talking about the standards in there. And we're trying to do all of this while not adding a lot of texts. So it's very minimal text and as we go along the way with that, so. I don't want to talk about all of these too long, but just so that everyone knows that there's a lot of thought that goes into this so that we're getting photos in there and, but we're still meeting our goals of making sure that we're talking about our curricular, um, avenues as well. Although we're really excited about where we're going with, um, our digital, we are not leaving print behind because we need to be touching everyone in our community as much as possible. So doing it in this way, we're touching, um, every single residence and every single business in Solon every time we send out this, um, postcard every month. So that's over eleven thousand addresses in Solon every single month that we send them to.
That's awesome.
Um, and then this links to, um, where we, where we post on our website. So I'm gonna pop out to there, if you give me a second here. And we post each issue on our website so that when they get this at home and they use the QR code, they'll see every issue right there on our website and they can read each issue as well. So they can see the same thing that you see when you, um, get that in your email.
I'll also say that it's, uh, it's responsive. So if you look at it from your phone, you will see it, it'll be formatted for your phone, the pictures coming down in the line.
Yeah, I just pulled it up.
Yup.
Yep.
See it just as easily that way, exactly. So, and then on each of the postcard, we highlight the, um, some of the, um...
Articles.
Articles, sorry, some of the articles from each one. I always highlight a fin- yes, thank you.
I said infield.
Yeah, we always highlight a finance fact on there. I want to make sure that everyone in the community is seeing that there's a finance fact on there. And then, um, we also are doing the larger postcards that go...
That's in the plastic binder right here.
And then these are, these are special focus, um, issues. The one over the summer was on graduation. And this is how we get out to the community, what people oftentimes really want to know. Where are our kids going for their post-secondary plans? Um, so are they going to the military, safety forces? Where are they going to college? Um, some of the extra special, you know, um, programs that they're, that they're doing and things like that, you know? And then, um, there's, we have one coming up right now on activities and, and clubs that our students are involved in. We embed this also in our website. So, and both of these publications were, won awards, um, through our Ohio High School Public Relations Association. So we're really proud of that as well.
Do you send these to businesses?
Mm-hmm.
Every address gets one.
And the reason every address gets one is because every address in Solon is a Solon taxpayer and supports our schools. So this is, this isn't very common among all school districts. Many just send it to the residents and things like that, but we make sure that we touch every, every, um, every residence and business. And this brings us to our second, um, specific result, which is...
Bus drivers.
Sorry. I know, we're, we're moving a little bit faster. Okay, um, we were really excited this summer to be able to, um, launch our, the redesign of solonschools.org. Um, this was kind of a, a labor of love, more a labor than a labor of love. Um, it, um, we spent a lot of time really rethinking our website and what would meet the needs of all of the different users of our website as we went along there. And so, Michelle, I know you just, you, you know, showed how responsive it was for you. So that although, um, the website itself, um, incorporates so many of the things that are really important, it really does translate over well, um, for our, our users online who are using it either on their phone or on a tablet or something like that. I'm gonna take you here really quickly for just a second.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Some of the things that were really important to, um, our focus groups as we went through was not only that we had, you know, graphics and video and, and things like that. It was, um, multiple points of entry for our, for our families so that they could easily get to all of our schools. Our old website, if you'll remember, had all of these schools just kind of lumped together in one entry point that was very hard to find things. Um, so we've, um, created multiple points of entry for them to find their schools in there. Quick links for them to get to different things like athletics, to get to the athletic site. All, all multiple ways for them to find things. Here is the live stream that we talked about earlier this evening for, for people to find. I'm gonna go back here for a second. As we worked through the website and we, we found different ways to make sure that people were getting what they needed, we wanted to build different aspects of the website to put resources for kids and families to make them very easy to find. Um, we talked a little bit about, um, in the old website, we had those, um, quick links that were on there. We used a different format in this website, which is we've linked out to kind of Google Sites, which our kids and are very used to finding, um, their, their documents on. Um, so you'll find a lot of, um, Google Sites in here where the kids can find what they need. So in here, this is Succeed@SC. The same thing appears on the middle school website where these are all the important documents that they need. Their program of studies, their daily schedule, where they sign up for lockers, um, where they sign up for parking permits. All of those kind of things are just here, right there in a very, very easy to find resource. The other areas that were really important for us to, we, we looked at those, um, icons. That was just a key thing, especially for elementary families, that they really, um, really wanted to find what they needed very fast.
Single-click to the lunch menu, very important.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
But all, all of those, so all of those icons are not the same, are not the same on every, on every one of the sites. We're still building out all of our school sites, but we're customizing each of those links on all of those sites. One thing that will not change on any of those sites is the single-click to the lunch menus. That was the, really one of those very important things that we wanted to, um, put there for, for families. One of the other things that was really important for us to put in there is because although our website, for the most part, is a place for our families to find things, it also is a place where people in the community or people looking at our district from outside look for information. So part of our website also includes on our homepage, information about our district as a whole. And so this main part of the website on the bottom part really talks about who we are, who we are as SC. And talks about all of these are all of our As, because we are an all-A district, of course. So it talks about, about us, what we are about academics. You can read a little bit about what we are academically, what we, all about our achievements. All about the activities that our kids are involved in. All about the arts and all about athletics. Because we talk about the three-legged stool, the four-legged school, stool, the five-legged... There's so many aspects, they're really the pillars that make Solon what we are. And then who we are by the numbers. There's so many numbers, which I know makes Tim really happy, um, that kind of makes up, um, the district as a whole. And this part of the website down here can change over time. So we've already kind of made a little bit of changes down here. These photos can change and kind of the numbers down here can change as kind of a, you know, a, a footer to our, our website. So these are, are ways that we can add things for, um, people in the, the, the community at large as well as our families and our students. And we are adding things over time so that people can, you know, learn a little bit more about our district and our schools as we go. The other important thing that was, you know, that as, as we built this site, sorry, is that we have news and information on here and our district, um, calendar built into the, into the website. So that all of our, um, news and information and our calendar is very visible for people. And it's a more interactive calendar than it was before. We don't print the PTA, um, hard copy calendar anymore, um, which our community has really supported. Our PTA has supported that. Um, and we're able to build in, if you want more information about a specific event, you just click on that event and we're actually able to put flyers or different information built right into the calendar there. So it really makes it a more...
Do PTA put in their own stuff or do you have to...
So it's distributed. What we've done is we've set it up so that each building has their own Google Calendar. We've le- we've leveraged Google so that each building is in charge of it.
I was just kinda curious.
And then it's all coordinated into a master schedule where they all overlay.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you go to, click, control click onto that one there. So you go here to view all the events. If you'll see each one of those checkboxes, those things are actually connected to a specific Google Calendar. But all of those calendars layer into a color-coded calendar that you don't see in the backend. But what you can do, and it's a really great feature, scroll up to the top. You see the little, um, the little three lines there on the right side? If you click on that, what it'll do is it launches to these and you can actually subscribe to these calendars on your phone. And then you will get access to the building calendars that you need on your phone so that they're constantly updating and going through it. It's, it's, we've had multiple school districts reach out to us to ask...
People know to do that though?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you. No, I mean, it's, I can tell you it's huge. We've had multiple districts reach out to us and say, "How did you do this? How did you get this, how did you get all of your community to accept this? And what is your uptick rate in it?" And I know, especially for our parents, the parents with multiple, with multiple children across multiple schools, we also do this with all of our athletic events too.
Yeah, which is awesome, I mean, it's great.
So you can actually subscribe to, you could subscribe to the wrestling calendar. You can subscribe to the bask- girls' basketball calendar and get all those events automatically synchronized. And as they change, that'll automatically get updated on your phone.
This was really something that we worked really hard on and like Fred said, you know, yes. We, we said we're not going back and we didn't and it was just, it was a, it was a great addition for us. So one more thing that I need to show you, which is circling back to where we were when we talked about those teacher, um, guidelines coming together. When we were building this website and, and coming back and working together on it, um, the new CMS, which is how you, um, program a website, it didn't have those full teacher websites that our old website had. And so we had to come at this, how were we going to structure this with our new website? And so what we were able to do is create on our new website, what we, what we have now, which is links in the, um, staff bios to teacher Google Sites. So every teacher has their own Google Site. And so they control that on their end. And so the front end is completely uniform, um, through our website.
Do they all do it?
Yes.
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 Yes. So we just click here.
Here's Garrett.
Yep. I'm gonna click on his for you right there. So this is, this is Solon Middle School. And we're gonna click on Mr. Patty's name right there.
Cool.
And here it pops up to his, to his name. And the teacher, the parents know that here are his daily lessons and homework. And at the middle school, they have this link actually embedded in their, in their email. And it's, it, they send it to them. It's, it's very contiguous, so they know where to go. Yep.
So this is where you, at the beginning, remember when she talked about how we, we looked up norms and what we were going to do and grade bands and going through it? This is the offshoot of that. Every teacher in this team does this. And then for each of those days, they put down what the daily lesson was, what the homework would be that they need to put in their agenda, if there's upcoming assignments they need to do. So this is something that becomes a collaborative calendar for parents to look at, to check on their kids. But more importantly, for kids to check on it for themselves.
Right.
To build up those, those skills of scheduling and time management.
Right. And so this one is an orchard calendar, so it looks a little different. And same thing. It's all the team-based, so it's all in one place. So which is important. So it's not, the kids don't have to go to three different places. The parents don't have to go to three different places. It's right here. All of the homework is, is right there for them. And then obviously, it looks a little bit different for, for K through four. So, but you still enter through the same place on the website. I'm just taking you right here. She has her, her newsletter right there. And then obviously, whoops, sorry. You just go right there. All of her newsletters are right here. Now she, they, they email them out. Some of the, the schools are done a little differently. Two of the schools, they just email them each month. So remember when we saw at the beginning, how the principals email them out to them and they put the links in there? Same thing with the teachers, the same way.
This is the equivalent of the pieces of paper that our kids were crumpled in the ba, in the bottom of their backpacks.
Of their backpacks, yeah.
Right.
It's just now they're done digitally.
Right.
How intense is this for the teachers?
How intense is it?
You know, like putting all the.
The great part is they were already doing it.
This is not intense.
Okay, okay.
They were already doing this. All we did was we leveraged the tools that they were using to make them. Since we shifted to being a, a Google, a Google School, so everybody uses Google, teachers were already making their newsletters in Google Docs. All they're doing now is clicking a share button to create a public view link.
Oh, good.
And then they can send that out. It's all, it's all built in. One of the things we did when talking to our committees about this was, we didn't want to make more work for the teachers to do it. They're already checking voicemails. They're already checking emails. We didn't want to have a, a third avenue to do that. So we said, let's meet them where they are and then develop a system that uses the stuff they're already doing to communicate it to families.
What's helpful is a lot of these things that are on here are going to maybe make it so we don't have to make as many phone calls to see what we're doing and when we're doing it and how we're supposed to do it and.
Right. Well, and it's also important because our family structures are so different right now. So instead of like just, you know, if it's going home, like in the backpack on Wednesday, you know, all of our family members can always, can always see that.
Awesome.
Go to the last slide. This is me.
It is you. This is, this is our third.
This is our third and.
Specific result.
Final section of, of the strategic plan. But we talked about completing a job analysis on positions that deal with communication. Very similar to what we did with our social emotional learning that we talked about the last time we were together, where we looked at where the gaps were to go through it. We did the same thing. And I think it's important to look at this and look at these three columns, because we're showing the evolution of the position. So when we started this position back in 2002, it was, it was just regular communication. We were just doing print newsletters that were coming out. Everything was paper. It was, the, the person was there just to be a liaison to our families and community. As things started expanding, they started doing things with, they became, I, I know, starting in 2012, they became the point of contact for technical support for parents logging on to access, how do I get my kids' grades and going through that.
Technical support for everything.
Right.
As I recall.
I, I remember that.
They were the people that, doing all of the school tours. And when I say the people, I really mean Tammy.
I was just gonna say, what is the they? Is that, was that something new that I didn't know?
You know?
There wasn't a they.
I remember she was instrumental. She was instrumental in our, in our TPP lobbying group.
Absolutely.
She basically wrote the columns for every district that was doing this. But then we look at today, and now there is a 24/7 expectation for work to go through it. Student access to things, but still, all these extra things, the digital monthly newsletters. The website that we're looking at, we've tried to do some distribution, but I will tell you that it is primarily Tammy. Every one of those icons that you see on our website, all of those students by the numbers, all of the, all of those components.
Everything that has to be updated.
Right. It all goes. Now, we've distributed some of it. So like the athletics site, athletics handles the athletics sites and teachers handle those. But any of the core functions of our website are all handled by Tammy. And that's all while doing monthly Know Your Schools newsletters, still doing the school tours, still going to events to get images to go through it. Her, her job is really, her job has gotten to be about eighty hours a week, roughly speaking, when you go through it. So one of the things that Tammy and I have looked at doing is, as a start, we are going to, we have started the process of developing a digital media manager, whose sole function is going to be to manage our digital media presence. We're gonna start it as a part-time position and see, see how effective that piece can be. That way, we can free up Tammy to do some of the larger strategic communications initiatives so that the, the day-to-day things she won't have to do. The website's going to be updated by this individual. Fixing our social media presence so that when those events come, they'll get those events posted on our social media channels. Helping with some of the, the communications triage that comes in. And so we're going to start with that process. But you can see, as you look at where we were in 2002 to where we are now, and honestly, we're not really doing justice all of the work that actually goes into the position. So.
Can we start that like today?
Yeah, 'cause you need like.
Right now?
Well, just so we're clear, one of the, and I hate to say this, because she hates it when I say this, Tammy has problems letting go. And so.
Well, that's true.
So we've gotten to the point where I said, Tammy, we have to make this happen sooner rather than later. So the draft of the position has been created in terms of what the expectations are.
Awesome.
We're still waiting for the final tweaks on that. And by we, I mean I, I'm still waiting on the final tweaks from Tammy about the specific pieces that she wants to have on it. And then at that point, when that's done.
Until that all works.
We are going to, we are going to advertise through, we, we really think it should be a local person. We think it should be a parent. We, we got, we.
You have a.
Joe identified Tammy out of our, out of our parents. You know, Tammy started as a parent. Many of you, as board members, started as parents in the district. We tap people that have, we, we tap people that are active people in our community to use their skills and expertise. Tammy has a journalism background. It was a perfect fit. I think your first activity for us was in 2000?
We did, we, we.
On the levy campaign.
The levy campaign.
And Joe had identified her as an individual that would be that. We're doing that same process with this person so that we can have somebody who will grow with the district and be here, who's, who's bought into what we're doing. So that's where we are now. We're hoping to have that position buttoned up and working for us before the end of the school year.
Awesome.
Not school year, end of the calendar year. So that's where we are.
Good. I was hoping.
Tammy, you'll like that.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard.
I know, it'll be hard, but it will make some difference.
She won't, but she'll learn to.
Yeah.
I will like it.
She works.
Oh, no, you will.
She works tirelessly. It's very clear that she works tirelessly. And we really believe that, you can see just in the presentation that she just gave, with everything that is being communicated now versus where it was two years ago. I help her a lot with, with the communications. And it's still, the bulk of it's on her shoulders. And she, she does it. She doesn't really complain about it. But I think we need to give her some additional help for that. And that's why.
Well, that'll give you the opportunity to focus on a lot of the things that, that you need to focus on and not be doing some of the.
Power School logins.
Yeah.
Well, I gotta be honest, Power School logins is a great one, though.
We should talk about that, yes.
We have actually distributed the Power School logins now so that we are making the buildings responsible for managing their own Power School login, technical support.
Yes, we have.
We've trained, we've trained the building clerical staff so that they are now the first point of contact for troubleshooting. And we're in the process of retraining the people who got used to calling Tammy to call the buildings instead for that technical support.
Those people.
We're, we're getting there.
Those people. Everyone calls Tammy, though. That's the.
Everyone calls Tammy.
That's kind of the way that works.
I mean, and that's, like, some of the things up here, I think it's important to look at some of the images, because some of that is just the growth in how much more our kids are doing and their success. You probably can't see that at the bottom of the screen, one of those news releases is nine National Merit Scholars at the bottom there.
Yeah, no, I know.
The one we just sent out, you know.
Yeah, it was fifty-five.
Yeah. And so even just that basic work in terms of like proofing those kinds of things and stuff is just so much more, which is just amazing. Our kids are doing so much more. And so we're just, you know, we have lots of comet pride in them.
Guess we have to keep up, huh?
We do. We do.
So that is what we've been working on.
Well, I consider the five of you, I don't care what anyone says, you do a hell of a job. You really, really did. We're.
Indeed.
Very happy to have you.
We work really good together as a team, really well together as a team. All of us are here for the schools first and foremost and for the kids in those schools. So.
Well, I think it, it, a lot can be said for the strategic planning process and, and how successful it is and why, why since nineteen, it's driven who we are and what we do every single day.
Many districts treat their strategic plan as a, as a propaganda document.
Right, and put it on a shelf.
We do not. We actively work. If, if it's in our strategic plan, we are figuring out a way to implement that.
Well, I think this has given us a lot to think about. And it certainly has helped us all understand all the work that does go into it. So, since everyone did an awesome job.
Do you need a motion?
Thank you. Say again?
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, we do.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
This is Barksdale. This is Aubrey.
Is that what I was supposed to say?
We're wiped out tonight.
You're so good at it.
I think Michelle wants to stay a little longer.
I do, actually. I, I.
Mrs. Barksdale.
Uh, yes. Yeah.
Mrs. Aubrey.
Yeah.
Mr. Eckman?
Yes.
Mrs. Patton?
Yes.